Good morning, and welcome to our meeting for August the twentieth, twenty twenty five. And Michael Taylor, would you please leave us in a switch?
I find the ladies to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Tara.
Here's one for all this morning. Here's one for solidations. Do you have anything? It's in the morning. We just had the one she lost the order up. We'll send out the order. We have regular exonerations. And I have four refunds. Two were due last time. One was the other. One is a roof fund due to exoneration. The lady had already told it before we got it exonerated. And two were new ones. They were just going, what's that? So thank you. I appreciate that. Actually easier for everybody than I just did. But yeah.
Okay, well, I move that we approve the order to combine land, the same property owners, and all three lots combined into one.
Second.
Got a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, I move to.
She will. And then you sign with her.
I move to approve the exoneration.
Second.
Have a motion and second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye. And then we approve the refunds.
Second.
Have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's all Johnny's son.
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah, there's always doubles on the fence.
The second to introduce you all. I brought her with me to kind of see how the meetings work. That way if something happens and I keep leaving your own meeting day, I can walk home and not see.
Okay.
Just so you're familiar with the base.
Right. For sure.
Anything else? Well, thank you, Tara.
We'll look for running assessments. Tara, do we have an order for running assessments or what's that item for?
And I've been left it over the last time.
Okay. Strike out.
You.
You're welcome. All right. Vouchers and invoices.
My crystal interview these, um, not all as fire association dues don't qualify under our policy. Um, further, I'm concerned about its trash bill because it's renting dumpsters for a tiny fire department. So Golly Bridges bills are around twenty six dollars and that alls are a hundred and thirty seven or more. Um, so I think we ought to, you know, pay it, but I think we ought to reach out to the metal all about that.
Except for the dues, right?
Make sure they need. Yeah, we should pay the, yeah, not the dues because that's against our policy, but but the trash.
Trash.
Then, um, with regard to Anstead Fire Department, there were some charges for what looked like redundant software. So I want to talk to the fire chief about that and speaking with fire coordinator. Um, one of the software charges is something all of the departments is are planning to go to, and so those rates are probably going to change their startup fees and things included there. So I think we should postpone. Um, the chief three sixty and the Penguin Management Dispatches dot com to the next meeting. When that other stop, when the chief three sixty software will be on the agenda. Um, there were also foam coffee cups and air fresheners on one of the receipts that I think we should exclude from reimbursement.
That's Amsted?
Yeah. And, um, and just for the record, I don't know that the chief was trying to get reimbursed for those. They they were just ones that Gia was going to reimburse. I don't think we should reimburse those. Um, and then with regard to the litter, that's eighteen fifty. Do you know what that's about, Josh?
It's kitty litter. If you saw like all vehicle accidents to drive.
Okay, I didn't know because I what I was trying to, um, figure out there. I didn't know if it was a litter to carry people. I didn't know if it was for the high, high angle rescue. So if it was, we were going to look at the general budget, not the fire department specific budget for that one.
And she kept.
Okay, okay.
And a freeze.
Okay, well, that makes more sense. Okay, good. So we got that one resolved. Um, and then with regard to the fire coordinators invoice, the cleaning out of storage unit, I think we should exclude. Um, from reimbursement because that's something I think the firefighters should have been helping with. So I move that we approve the vouchers and invoices minus the net all fire association dues. The chief three sixty software for Anstead and the dispatches dot com software for Anstead. And the, um, fire coordinators, um, five point five hours to clean out storage unit.
I second.
Have motion second to floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move to approve payroll. August 12th second.
I'll second. Got a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move. We approve the minutes for the July twenty third and August sixth meetings.
Second.
Got a motion second on four. All those in favor?
Aye. We approve the state settlements, the state settlements.
Second. Got a motion second on four. All those in favor?
Aye. Normally.
We're moving on.
Okay, so first is vehicle purchases. So the maintenance truck is done. We need a truck. Angela Gerald's, I mean, officer, her vehicles just about done. And then emergency management had requested, and it was budgeted for a vehicle for them. And I gave you the statement. It's John over this morning. About. What or who?
We're talking about the, uh, the the trucks, the vehicles that came from.
Yeah.
Actually, we're looking for three vehicles.
Three.
And one for maintenance, um, one for Angela's office, which is zoning. Pete wanted to call her something construction. And then, uh, a vehicle for a new person that will be starting at emergency management. Um, we had several bids that came in.
Actually, those are on the state contract. We didn't have to do anything. They have a list.
Oh, okay. All under state contract, which made it a little bit better. Um, so do you want to go ahead and give us the ones with the best prices?
So the the Dodge, you have him in front of you, John, the twenty five hundred?
Yeah.
Had the better price or make? How much was it? Thirty seven?
No, the Dodge, the Dodge Ram is forty two, six twenty one.
And then, yeah, I don't have the.
Uh, the Ford Escape was thirty thousand, three fifty six.
What was the Ford Escape for? Zoning?
Zoning.
What were her other options?
I mean, you could give Jeep the same thing we're getting for Jack. It's a Jeep Grand Cherokee. I think it's thirty seven.
I'd rather get her something that she can travel in all weather.
We could just get both of them.
Well, that one has, uh, four wheel, all wheel drive.
Yeah, I'd rather her have something.
So that's, that's what the estate has. Because I had one when I worked before and it went all the way up my hill with no problem at all.
It's got the four wheel drive, all wheel drive, hollow range.
Yeah.
There's.
No, it's, uh.
It it'll, it'll go.
Yeah, it's thirty thousand, three fifty six. And then the, uh, the Jeep is a four wheel drive, all wheel drive. Uh, it's thirty seven, nine twenty four.
He could do. I don't. I mean, it doesn't matter.
Here's the sheet.
So were those the three?
Yeah.
Who live that one at Stevens, John, for forty two is not four wheel drive.
Oh, okay. I pulled the wrong one then.
Yeah, we need the four wheel drive.
Yeah, I think it's forty eight.
Yeah.
We're looking at.
Forty five.
Forty five.
Forty four.
About that four.
Yes. That's a right to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I review. Yeah, the one that the other this one, I've looked at this one's rear wheel.
Give me this three second. We're going to play the record. I gave it to her.
So here's the same thing. And then here's the, so I move that we purchased the, um, where's it say the make and model?
It's right here at the top. It's twenty five hundred ram.
Oh, yeah, the twenty five hundred ram, um, DJ seven L nine two for maintenance. The grand G, Grand Cherokee, um, for who or Jack? For the nine one one center, park system manager, staff, and then, um, the Ford Escape for our zoning officer.
Second.
Carrie, a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we'll point out. Right, it's under fifteen thousand.
I just want to make that.
Sorry.
Yeah, do you have the ability to then take care of that?
It's nine fifteen. It's nine fifteen.
Oh, okay. It's nine fifteen. Um, we're going to talk about options for the jail that's located behind the four house. Do we have anybody here for that? Come on in. When you come up to the microphone, please state your name and who you're with.
Hey, uh, my name is Mike Geolis, and I can leave a card if somebody is spelling. Um, I'm a historic preservation consultant, and I've been working with, uh, Charles Wendell on the school properties that he's developing here in town.
Okay.
And I was part of a group that, uh, visited the jail last week at the invitation of Commissioner Burnett. Uh, and we looked at the building. Um, just a short visit, not a full inspection or anything like that. Um, and we did feel the building was basically sound. Uh, it didn't appear to be in distress, although there are roof leaks and other things that you can notice when you go outside the building, but nothing serious. Um, there are, uh, some limitations to being able to adaptively reuse it for something right now. Uh, the biggest limitation is the floor, floor to floor height between the three stories, which limits what would be on any one story. Uh, so the critical issue to retaining the jail that we felt discussed with the commissioner was to identify a use, uh, and it would probably be a use that did not require occupancy because again, a floor height. Um, human occupancy, I mean, uh, and so we discussed a couple of alternatives, one of which was a mini or micro data center, uh, that could be housed there, that could service some facilities here in the county. Um, uh, or in the city. I looked into that a little bit, uh, between then and now, and that seems to be a viable activity. Um, uh, and in fact, in Sutton, where I'm from, uh, Chantel, which provides, uh, internet service, um, to the area, constructed a one story small building for their data facility and, uh, internet servicing. So something like that would be a possibility. Uh, we didn't investigate any further, uh, so that would need to be investigated. Um, we think demolishing, we discussed it, and we think demolishing it right now would be expensive. Um, and would, once it's demolished, it precludes reusing it, uh, uh, and the replacement, uh, facility, if there were to be one, would be expensive to construct as well. So we recommend with that, I recommend, um, that we, uh, investigate the potential uses for the building, uh, and invest once a use is potential use is identified, investigate whether the building can really be rehabilitated into that use. Uh, and so then it's not lost forever. Um, we feel that if it's demolished, it will never, uh, you won't be able to return it. So there's no sense in demolishing it until you determine specifically whether it can be reused. Um, there may be funds available for doing that kind of investigation. Uh, the State Historic Preservation Office has money for studies. The Brownfields System Center has money for studies and for cleanup. Uh, a program called Downtown Appalachia and another program called Opportunity Appalachia have monies for that kind of activity. So it would be good to investigate that. Um, and so we recommend investigating all avenues, uh, and possibly reuse that. Uh, funds for rehabilitation can come from some of those same sources. Uh, if it's determined that it is feasible to rehab, and then additional funds can come from what's called the State Historic Preservation Tax Credit, uh, which, uh, Mr. Wendell is using on his properties on Town Hill. Uh, other communities have used them to rehab public buildings, even though it's a tax credit. The state tax credit can be sold, monetized, and then you get back about eighty percent of what your credit would be. Seventy to eighty percent. Um, Bloxburg did it for the Robertson Grand Theater. Uh, Charlestown did it for their Washington Hall rehabilitation. So it is a feasible, it's, uh, activity.
In in your estimate, how much do you feel that it would cost to make the building usable?
That's, that's a good question. Um, I'm not sure I could really give you that answer right now. I, uh, I'd probably look at usable for, well, depends on the activity, of course, because some of that would require infrastructure that would be expensive. Um, but usable for, uh, an activity such as what we're talking about, I'd say about a hundred to a hundred fifty dollars per square foot. And I don't, I, we didn't measure it, so I don't know what the square foot jump building is.
So when we, when we went in, and this is just for the general public to know that what we did, we we're looking at every option before we make a decision about what we would do with historic building that may or, you know, may or may not be an historic building in Fayetteville. We think it is.
Hmm.
Um, the limitations are that it only has one stairwell, right?
Yes, the limitations again for reuse as an office or commercial space is that it only has one stairwell. If it were used for another activity, uh, the code requirements are less than that.
And and that's what I was talking about. If we would reuse it for office space, we would probably be limited. We would have to redo the whole thing. Probably would not, it would probably be be not feasible to do because of the access, the stairwells, uh, fire suppression, uh, low ceilings. There are a lot of limitations to the building right now as it exists. And I guess, and what was it built nineteen?
Asbestos, lead paint.
There's red paint.
All of that.
Uh, it was built nineteen oh seven.
Nineteen oh seven, and so they didn't have the codes in nineteen oh seven. However, it is still a venerable old building. I mean, it it is structurally sound. I mean, it's it's a good old building, but there are a lot of limitations that come with it. You know, is that what we?
That we discussed, yes.
Ceiling. Just out of curiosity.
If if it's about an eight foot four floor, floor height, we're looking at a ceiling of about seven feet eight inches. And so in an occupied facility, that's too low by too low.
Even with land of coal miners.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Um, all right.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming in and investigating. Um, I I think that, uh, it's with the information that we currently have plus the information you give us, it gives us something to discuss at a later point in time.
And you want to contact me.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, West Virginia American Water Right Away Agreement. Anybody here from Western American? Come on, I'm on up. Uh, tell us who you are and who you're with.
My name is John Green. I'm a consultant for the American Water Company. I was asked to represent them here today to answer your question you had about the request.
Okay. On page two, fifth line down, it starts with grantors reserve the right to cultivate, pave, or otherwise use a service of the easement area in any way not inconsistent with the use and enjoyment of the rights herein granted, however, and in intent, blah, 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 blah. Um, since this is FEMA property, uh, this cannot be in that agreement. I don't know if you guys are just using a blanket agreement.
This is the standard agreement that they use, and we can modify it.
Yeah, so it it's going to have to be taken out before we can sign.
Okay. Was the rest of it okay?
Which?
I mean, I didn't see any.
I didn't see anything else either.
I mean, what's the purpose? Where are you guys going to use this storage?
The purpose of this is to uh, replace some aging infrastructure that's already existing in the area. And so what we're going to do in the easement area is come in and replace the water. So we have, you know, I can find that space where the developed pipe into the ground, across the creek, uh, to the other side, come out, pick it in, you know, continue on to insert a saw the family's over.
So the intended use is going to be a water mine. It'll be other.
Yes, everything will be, uh, at least, uh, three and a half feet under the ground. Probably a lot of this will probably be feasible because it's going to be through. There will be a short section that goes back up to the road and hooks to the main lines. That will be three and a half feet deep. There will be one valve that will be above ground, but it will be flushed through the ground, and it will be off of the property up on the road.
Okay. Is there, is there any, there wouldn't be any reason for a question, you know, American waters want to pave with a water block?
No, they will not do that. This is just given that this, uh, line in the agreement is just giving the grantors, which would be the county, the right to come back and do that later if they wanted to do that because
Oh, actually, yeah.
because that can be cut out and replaced, and that's the.
Yeah.
That that's actually referencing the county.
Yeah, but we still can't sign it because it's FEMA property where it talks about going in and paving.
The the point is, is the grantor's reserve the right, the grantor's being the county commission reserves the right to do that. The county doesn't have to do that.
Yeah, it's just, it just means you can if you want to.
I think we'll just, let's just strike it for a second.
Yeah.
Okay, that will be the grantors covenant. You, you just strike them?
We'll, we'll, we'll provide, we'll strike it, and we'll sign a copy with it stricken, and then you guys will get that. Okay, so I move that we approve the agreement, um, absent that provision.
Second. Got a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye. But.
Yeah. Ruth?
The next thing is the, um, grant assistance.
With Meta Bridge.
You know, how's the, um, how's the building going for Meta Bridge that we provided all the funding for?
Is that Meta Bridge or is that Danese?
Oh, it's Meta Bridge.
Meta Bridge.
It's a community center, and they give out food weekly.
It's not for Danese too.
Yeah, they give out food there weekly. It's a community center. And that's what they're asking for, community center.
That's where the the upgrade's supposed to be taking place.
Correct.
Was at the community center.
Yes.
And I I'm pretty sure that some of this stuff that that i- is already built into that bid that was already done, but we haven't seen nor heard of anything that's going on. If it's started, if it's halfway done.
He was there. That's where this, how this came about.
Yeah, I was, I went down to the, uh, where they gave out the backpacks for the schoolchildren. And then we 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 discussed the community center and, uh, and how they are benefiting their community. And he asked if there was anything out there they could get to help uh, the building.
Okay, well, I would like to postpone this until we get information from the engineer that's taking care of that. And plus, all of our grants and everything are looked at in October. Um, so that's my motion.
Second.
Uh, there's a question. Who who do you want to, you want me to go down and and speak with the mayor and see what we got, uh, going on?
No.
Chris Burford's doing the engineering, his company's doing engineering. Is that, sorry, John?
Yeah, Chris is doing the engineering on the community center at Meta Bridge?
Yes. Yeah, so need to, need to have a a complete update.
We'll get a, we can do that.
I'd like to have him come in and give us an update on that, please.
So you want the first meeting in October while we're standing here as you're funding or the second meeting?
Whichever one you think. Doesn't matter.
I don't hear. There's thirty meetings.
Let's do the second meeting.
Yeah. The funding request will be at second meeting in October. But, uh, okay, we have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number three.
Pardon now.
Okay, that was me.
Yeah.
So I put that on there because, um, I saw the pastor of the church at, uh, Terrace Swearingin, and he advised me that the church had to pay back the six thousand dollars we allocated for them during the floods because FEMA required it. And they still have a lot of work they're trying to do down there to clean up from the floods, and I think we ought to give that money back to them.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
I'll second. Got a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye. And then, uh, the next one was me too, even though the mayor's here. Um, where we have given funding to the fall fest or the festivals for Oak Hill and Anstead. Um, Montgomery has a fall festival coming up, and I'd like to move that we allocate, um, the same one thousand dollars to Montgomery's Fall Festival to help it pull that off.
I second.
Okay, got a motion second on four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Number six, we're going to do that in executive session.
You missed number five.
Academy attendance.
That number five.
Reimbursement agreement.
Yeah, so these are the agreements, the new deputies sign. It says if they were put them through the academy and they leave within a year of finishing that, they have to reimburse them that calls or all of that calls. All the new, they've been up for a couple of years, I think.
Yes.
Okay, so this is just renewing the agreement?
Uh, this is just for the.
This is for the new ones. So this would be for the three that just started, and they're going next.
Do we need to put this through the agenda? I mean, if we've already approved this form, shouldn't the president just be able to sign?
That's up to you.
I move that the president in the future be able to sign these agreements, uh, with the deputies without a meeting.
The only reason it would have to be only a general is if they changes to.
Right, yes. We've already approved the agreement. This is just, I don't want us to have to hold that up.
No other objection with legal there that we do this? I I second it.
Got a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
So the next are like personnel assessments that I need to know.
All of them?
I think all of that really.
Yes, you want to.
Um, okay. You won't have time this morning with it. That's the only thing to have right of this to be there.
All right. What about the, uh, number eight?
That's going to need to be exempted obsession.
Okay. All right, so we really don't have time before the bid opening to do that, so we'll go after the bid opening. So for right now, you've got a twelve minute break. Okay, welcome back to our county commission meeting. Um, we're getting ready to do some bid openings for Anstead Volunteer Fire Department for the roof. Uh, we have actually two bids to get information from.
Do we have a one to fill out? Oh, that. Well.
It's going out in the bed, right?
Where were the two bits from?
Um, almost heaven roofing and
Alpha Roofing.
Alpha Roofing. Okay.
You ready?
Mm hmm.
The base bid for Alpha is sixty five thousand, seven hundred twenty five dollars.
Uh, the one for almost heaven, they actually have two. Almost Heaven, they actually have two.
What's that?
Um, if they run into troubles. The first bid is a hundred and thirty six thousand, one hundred and eighty five. You know, this is going to have to go to someone, this is going to have to go to our, our construction guy to let him look to see. To make sure that they're consistent with what the bid request was, I I don't know why a company is given two.
No, we didn't ask for two, we didn't ask for two options, did we?
So, uh, their their bid is a hundred and thirty six thousand, one hundred and eighty five dollars.
Is he here today? Yeah, let's have him look at it while we're in executive session, that way maybe we get it knocked out.
Okay, so if you don't have any reward movement.
Oh, we don't, okay.
What, you have questions?
Yeah, so you're going to have one of your construction guys look at it, should we also be able to validate that it meets the specs that we put out?
Yeah, we'll have you meet with him, I mean, if you want to meet with him now, he's here today, so we're going to go in executive session and meet with him.
And you all to both look.
Get those two numbers to put on this list.
Chief would need to look at it, he's not. But he can get in contact with your construction guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's just the building inspector.
Oh, wait, this is.
And not a serious question, but what would your chief know about construction? Mike is a very, is very good.
If you would pass on to him, the main thing is, is that they have to. State law wise, they have to bid consistent with what we asked for, and so they have to be. You know, apples to apples when we're comparing them for prices, so if. If he sees something that he wants in the more expensive bid, he's going to have to rebid it. So that's, that's just, you know, so I don't want him to get frustrated because of that, that's just the way it is. But if he wants, you know, if it turns out that the two are apples, then, you know, we can award one.
And and the next step is we'll kind of get down on next agenda for awarding.
Yes.
Okay, right now, I'll move to go into executive session for legal information and personnel matters.
Which agenda items?
Agenda five, six, and so, or six, seven, and eight.
And I want to also discuss, um, the jail.
Welcome back to the commission meeting, uh, we just got out of executive session where no decisions were made. All right, so our next order of business. Is to discuss new employees.
You want me to do it?
Yes.
Okay, so for Deputy Chief of Emergency Preparedness, um, well, all, we're not naming any names yet, because we need to make some offers. We don't know whether these people, um, we discuss are going to be interested in accepting the position, but um. So I move that we uh authorize the county administrator to make an offer to um the individual. Uh, first and second choices in that order, if the first declines, um. And that we hire them pending their acceptance of the offers and background, successful background checks. That's, I'll make the same motion for the next position.
Why don't we just do them all at the same time?
Okay, same thing for the um animal welfare coordinator, although we did discuss. Um, hiring for two, hiring two people instead of one for that position, so that's why I was going to do them separate.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
So I'll just make an independent motion that we hire um two individuals if they accept the positions for the animal welfare coordinator. And assistant animal welfare coordinator.
Second.
Okay, motion second on four, all those in favor?
And uh, move to postpone the Humane Society Board appointment to next meeting.
Second.
Motion second on four, all those in favor?
I, then with regards to City Patrol, I move that our council um send the letter we discussed to make the changes to the MOU we discussed.
Second.
Or at least dra- draft a letter and we'll take a look.
Draft a mail second.
Motion second on four, all those in favor? That concludes our information.